Good evening. I'd like to call this business meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historic lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial, and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. General Counsel, will you please call roll?
Yes. President Keating?
Here.
Vice President Schroeder?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Director Baumwirth?
Here.
Director McCullough?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
What about the electorate?
And if you want me to call roll for the student board members?
Elizabeth.
Alright, so student board members for this year are Alicia DeLeon, Amanda Peterson, Lillian Taylor, and Amelia Constantine.
Thank you, General Counsel. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and communities. Six point one, state holidays and civic observances.
Yes, we have five state holidays or civic observances in the month of January. The first is Americans of Chinese Descent History Month. In January, Washington State honors and celebrates the rich history, culture, and contributions of Americans of Chinese descent. This month-long celebration recognizes and appreciates the diverse experiences and significant impacts of the Chinese-American community in shaping Washington's social, cultural, and economic landscape. We also have Human Trafficking Awareness Day in January. So, Human Trafficking Awareness Day is on January 11th and is dedicated to raising awareness about human trafficking, educating the public, and promoting efforts to combat and prevent human trafficking, to support survivors, and protect the vulnerable. In January, we also have Korean-American Day, which is on January 13th. This celebrates the contributions and heritage of Korean-Americans, including marking the arrival of some of the first Korean immigrants to the United States in 1903. This day recognizes the significant role of Korean-Americans in enriching our cultural, economic, and social fabric through their diverse contributions and achievements. We also have Martin Luther King Day, which is the third Monday of January. So, Martin Luther King Day is a state holiday, and it's observed, this year will be observed on, oh, we don't have the date on here, do we? Yeah, it's the 15th, it's not on the agenda, but it'll be observed on the 15th, which means that schools will be closed and district offices will be closed, except by appointment. On Martin Luther King Day, we honor Martin Luther King's contributions to the struggle for racial equality and social justice. This day serves as a reminder to continue working towards Dr. King's vision of a society where individuals are judged by the content of their character rather than the color of their skin. And our last observance is Temperance and Good Citizenship Day, which is on January 16th. This day is dedicated to promoting the ideals of responsible behavior and active citizenship among young people, and emphasizes the importance of temperance and personal conduct, and encourages youth to live lives of self-discipline, and for them to participate in civic and community affairs. And those are our five observances and holidays.
Thank you. Item six point two, recognition of the Tacoma Public School Board of Directors for School Board Recognition Month in January 2024.
Hello.
Hello, Tanisha.
I'm Senior Jumper, Chief Educations Officer. January is, I think there's supposed to be a slide.
So, just have to speak up?
Okay.
Would you like to use my? Would you like to use my?
Sure. I mean, I have my notes here, but there's just.
Kevin, is there a slide?
The audio in the room is not working, but the audio is working.
Excellent.
We're trying to figure out why that's happening.
Thank you. Is there a slide for item six point two?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mark. Technology's real.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, January is School Board Recognition.
Could you lift this slider?
January is School Board Recognition Month, as we want to take a few moments to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our board. The leadership is instrumental in the success of students. They are both worked tirelessly to keep students at the center of their work and decision-making. I want to highlight some of the successes that you have had for the past year. Our board has consistently been recognized by its peers for Washington State's leadership. As I shared last month, our board received the 2023 Board of Distinction Award from the Washington State School Directors Association. The award was given because there is a clear link between the board's decision-making and leadership, and the positive outcomes for students, including those closing the opportunity gap. Our board holds the district accountable for measuring student success. Last year, our school board took to revamping our grading policy for the first time in 20 years. They took a holistic, student-centered approach. They dug into issues by participating in in-person listening sessions at 10 middle schools and high schools. And as a result of that work, and additional pieces of research structures were added so that teachers must attach standards to assignments, thus helping students and families see and understand their grading process.
We can see it here, but I think that it's showing on the TV.
Oh, okay. At the start of 2023, students experienced a rapid and disturbing increase in youth gun violence. The school board members spoke out and acted on behalf of the students by spearheading conversations about violence and how to address it. As a result of that, summer late night, a citywide effort for all TPS middle and high school students was put into place. In all, more than 10,000 students, visits were logged at summer late nights, and with an average of 261 middle school and high schoolers showing up each night. So, thank you very much for all that you do in support of our students.
Thank you, Tanisha. Item number seven, woke up real loud. Item number seven, superintendent's report, there is no report. Item number eight, staff report to the board, and there is also no staff report to the board. Number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@tacoma.k12.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. Under Board Policy 1430, Public Comment, the board president may terminate an individual's comment when the allotted time has passed, and may interrupt a speaker to require the same standard of stability that the board imposes on itself. Examples of uncivil comments include comments that are libus or slanderous under a legal standard, are unwarranted invasions of privacy, are obscene or indecent pursuant to the Federal Communications Act, or any rule or regulation of the Federal Communications Commission, violate school district policy or procedure related to harassment, intimidation, bullying, or discrimination, incite an unlawful act on school premises, or violate a lawful school regulation, or create a material and substantial disruption of the orderly operation of the board meeting. The board as a whole has the final decision in determining the appropriateness of all such rulings, and can maintain order by removing those who are disruptive. However, the board recognizes the distinction between uncivil discourse, which is not tolerated, it will not tolerate, and comments about the board, district, and/or staff that are negative yet still civil in nature. The board will exercise its authority to maintain order in a content-neutral manner. Option one, verbal comment. General Counsel will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there is a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. Option two, written comment. The following members of the public have, oh, so, written comment, participants, or, excuse me, community members can submit a public comment to the board email address that I read earlier. General Counsel, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do not have any written comment uploaded to the agenda this evening, and we have not received any verbal comment for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number 10, the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
I move we adopt item 10, Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item number 11, Policy Matters. 11.1, First Reading of New Policy 3422, Student Sports, Concussion, Head Injury, and Sudden Cardiac Arrest.
The General Counsel, on behalf of the Director of Athletics and Activities, recommends that the Board of Directors review the draft proposal of new policy 3422 and provide feedback before a second reading. So, if you'd like me to just introduce it, we have not had a policy governing student sports concussion and sudden cardiac arrest before, but the law requires that we follow a certain set of protocols upon suspicion of a student suffering a concussion. We've been doing the steps that are required by law on the field at games. This is one of WAAS's essential modality, they moved it to essential, so we're looking to enshrine those protocols and procedures in our policy.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Director Leon?
I think it's quite important, just so the public out there knows, that these are safety precautions that our district has been doing for a very long time already. So, specifically around the concussion care, there's already been top-level care with regard to trainers, coaches, everybody involved. There are some slightly newer ideas and thoughts around research around the cardiac prevention topic on this, but also, that is also something that's been done by our coaches with regard to how quickly to start practices, like how quickly to push people to their max in exercise with heat and heat stroke, and those things all contribute to cardiac issues. There's a few things, topics in there that are still, we're going to be discussing and looking into with regard to kind of what the University of Washington is recommending versus national and international organizations, but I just want the public to know that we're already very safe with regard to how our kids are cared for in sports.
Yeah, it would also be important to note that we have already received some feedback on this policy, so when it comes to a first second reading, we'll have the input of the Equity Policy Review Team, and then we'll have the input of the feedback which we've already received from Director Leon, so that'll both be coming to you the next time. This is before you for an actual vote.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else? Any comments or questions? Alright, and we don't, being a first reading, we don't have to take any action on that. So, item number 12, Financial Reports. The monthly financial report will be presented at the January 25th, 2024 meeting. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacoma public schools.org/departments/businessandfinance. Item number 13, Curriculum and Instruction, and there is none. So, moving on to item number 14, Business Matters. Item 14.1, Approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Amendment Number Five to the Contract Between Tacoma Schools District Number 10 and the Absure Construction for Phase Two of the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle Project.
Yes, this is a continuation of our security upgrades across the district. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve GMP Amendment Number Five, which states the Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP for the purchase and installation, completion of assets, controls, intrusion detection, and intercom upgrades, and authorize a superintendent or designee to sign said GMP Amendment Number Five in the amount of $2,532,500 excluding sales tax.
Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.1.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chris, you were looking around. Is there something you needed to add?
You got the next one.
No, we're good. Okay. Item 14.2, Approval of Bid Acceptance for the Hunt Round Building Remodel and Site Improvement Project.
Yes, the Hunt Round Building will be utilized for community and partnership spaces in the future. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors accept the bid for Hunt Round Building Remodel and Site Improvements Project from Andy Johnson and Company Construction in the amount of $1,857,580 excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt item 14.2.
I second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It passes. Alright, thank you. Item 14.3, Approval of Contract to TSD-23-085 Amendment Number Two between Lilac City Behavioral Services and Tacoma Public Schools from August 1st, 2023 to July 31st, 2028.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-23-085 Amendment Number Two in the amount of $507,000 between Lilac City Behavioral Health Services and Tacoma Public Schools from August 1st, 2023 to July 31st, 2028. Funding source, Student Services.
I move to adopt 14.3.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Alright. Item 14.4, Approval of Contract Number TSD-23-115 Amendment Number Two, contractual agreement between Ampersand Therapy and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-23-115 Amendment Number Two in the amount of $216,000 between Ampersand Therapy and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2024. Funding source, Student Services.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt item 14.4. I second.
It's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Number 14.5, Approval to Award Contract for Fire Sprinkler Inspections and On-Call Service Contract.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize a superintendent to negotiate a contract for securing the purchase of fire sprinkler inspections and on-call service contract as needed. Fire sprinkle inspections are laboring industries, and fire department compliance issue must be completed annually.
I move item 14.5.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes 5-0. Item 14. Local Agreement Partnership with MetroParks for the Construction of Community School Yards at Larchmont, Mann, and Whitman Elementary Schools.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Inter-local Agreement between MetroParks, Tacoma, and Tacoma Public Schools for the Construction of Community School Yards at Larchmont, Mann, and Whitman Elementary Schools. MetroParks, Tacoma reimbursed a total of $250,000 each to Larchmont, Mann, and Whitman Community School Yard projects for a total of $750,000.
I move to adopt 14.6. I second.
It's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
Question. When we have these partnerships, like with MetroParks on the school yards, are these areas that are then more open to the public because they're shared? Like, they're not fenced as much or locked, so weekends and things, the public can use them? Is there a difference?
So, there's actually an additional partner, which is the Trust of Public Land, and it's initiative. This is our, it would be our total of five community school projects, which we're trying to ensure every resident has access to park space in Tacoma.
So, yes, they have a little more flexibility for that space. It's an idea with the 10-minute walk in there. And so, the challenge that I think we're talking about in some of the other spaces is they are gated up at certain times. So, we work in coordination with the parks, because sometimes their parks are also locked up in that space. And so, we try to ensure that there's as much equitable access as possible. And so, it's not as simple as a wide open, so each park is designed a little bit differently inside of that partnership between MetroParks Tacoma, the Community Land Trust, and TPS. And so, I know that's a little bit vague, but our intent is to try to give them as much flexibility so that the community can access them as well. And then, student voice is brought into that design process in that space as well.
Director Baumwirth?
Yeah, and I'd just like to remind the public and the board as well that this is a project we've been working on with MetroParks for quite a while. We're part of the initiative that the parks is spearheading to make sure that every resident in the city of Tacoma has a park access within 10-minute walk of their home. And so, these are Tacoma Public Schools partnering with the parks to make sure that that happens in areas where there isn't land for parks already in existence. And so, this is, the first one was Jenny Reed, and the second one was, why am I spacing? There was, there's two underway. I mean, Jenny Reed was the first one.
Stafford.
Stafford, thank you.
And if you drive by Stafford, you'd see that park construction, not school construction. It's alive and well.
Yeah, exactly. And so, these are the next three in the five that we agreed to about a year and a half, two years ago.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Chris, you're still standing there, so that must mean 14.7 is yours. Approval of inter-agency agreement for the administration and management of the state art collection between the Washington State Arts Commission and Tacoma Public Schools related to the Maritime 253 Skills Center.
Yes, the Washington State Arts Commission will be allocating $40,000 towards the design and procurement of art at the Maritime Skills Center. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the inter-agency agreement between the Washington State Arts Commission and TPS for the administration and management of the state art collection related to Maritime 253 Skills Center.
Is there a motion?
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions or comments?
I just would say that this is an exciting addition to the growing partnership that our community has for the Maritime Skills Center. And as we know, public art is an important piece of education at every level, and so I am super enthusiastic about this.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. And item 15, Other Business. 15.1, Approval to Request Emergency Declaration for Demolition of Former Galt Middle School.
Due to the recent fire at Galt Middle School, we have to expedite the demolition process at the site. We were already in the process of doing so, and recently the fire department declared it a public safety issue. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors declare an emergency exist at the former Galt Middle School and improve the immediate procurement of necessary equipment and services.
I move to adopt item 15.1. I second.
It's been moved in seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
Comment.
Director McCullough?
Man, this has been a whole long journey, and it's been a big part of my life from beginning to now where we're at. And I feel that as a community member, as a child who got to experience Galt, as a childcare provider who brought children to swimming lessons there, I think it's just deeply personal to the whole community that we've made it to this moment. And so, I would be, you know, letting down a lot of people if I didn't just take time to mention that Galt meant a lot to a lot of people here in Tacoma. And it's not on us, you know, that circumstances have put us in a position now where we have to expedite this. So, that's why I made the motion, and, but it is deeply personal. I'm kind of sad, but it's happening.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you, Chris. Moving on to item number 16, Board Comments and Reports. Who would like to go first? Oh, did I miss something? Oh, thank you. Hi, Lillian.
Hi, I'm Lillian. I am a student rep from Silas High School, and I just wanted to talk about Mean Girls, our musical that we're doing this year. Shows are February 9th, 10th, and then the Thursday, the 15th through the 17th. And we're doing our rehearsals now. It's a lot of fun. And you can get tickets online at silasmeangirls.brownpapertickets.com, and you can get them at the door, or you can get them at the Silas High School website. That's just what I want to say. Plug our show. Come see, it's gonna be fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Other Board of Reports? We're ready for you.
Alright. I love this. We've gotten such a habit, or yeah, of me going first, so it's a lot of fun right after the student reps. Mean Girls is gonna be at Silas. And like, you guys are doing like the whole Broadway adaption, but like, at your school. Oh, I'm excited. I'm gonna go. Because on Wednesdays, I do wear pink. So, there's a lot going on this weekend. It is MLK Weekend, which is a big deal in my family, my upbringing, so I thought, why not tell you all about what's happening? In the city of Tacoma, the Conversation 253, in partnership with Associated Ministries and the Institute for Black Justice, are hosting the 18th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. And this year's theme is Redeeming the Prophetic Vision: Building a Safe Community. It'll be at Evergreen State College Tacoma on Sunday, January 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00. You can register online and donate to these organizations so that they can keep doing awesome events and conversations like that. And then, on MLK Day, Monday, there's a citywide Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day Celebration at the Greater Tacoma Convention Center. It'll be streamed on TV Tacoma, and this year's theme is a Community Blueprint: Building Block by Block. I think that in my lifetime, we would always use MLK Day as a day to give back, to clean up your community, to talk about what you can do to make it better, or to like, build your vision for the future in our black family. So, that's what I'm gonna say. So, it was really important to us, and it's really important to me. I'll be at a few of these events, and then also with the groups that I work with, we are also talking with youth about what does it mean to you, what kind of legacy do you want to leave, and how do you want to clean up your city and make it better? So, I really like the themes of both these events, and I want to tell people about them. Also, it's still cold, very cold. Please continue to donate socks and new socks and new undergarments to anywhere you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Director McCullough, who else would like to go next? Director Leon?
I have more of a question. I'm just wondering about how things are with that kind of status update on the car racing groups that have been scaring some of the kids and people around some of the schools. It seems like it's improving, but I'm wondering if there's any information you can give us on that.
Unfortunately, we don't have any additional information. Just, we partner with the local law enforcement anytime it's reported, but I don't have any statistics of it slowing down or speeding up. Maybe that's not the right choice of words in this situation. I apologize, but I don't have an update. I will contact our partners and see what their perspective is, and I can try to give you a call and give you an update.
Thanks.
I could just add, the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting was yesterday, and there was discussion of that activity, and it has decreased at the moment. But there's, and there's a few factors as to why that is, but it's definitely something that's being monitored regularly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Director Baumwirth?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the fact that today is Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And, you know, I know it's a downer topic, and often, if it doesn't impact you directly, often times people don't think about it, but this is a crisis in our community, and especially relating to our children and keeping our kids safe. I know that there are a lot of community organizations that work really hard trying to help speak to kids about how to keep themselves safe, and how to be safe, and work with families, and also who work really hard with law enforcement to recover children from, who have been trafficked, and human, you know, adults as well. But in particular, our focus as schools are on these children. And, you know, I just want to say that when we've had a lot of more, that we've had a lot of immigration, which actually also puts those kids at risk more than others in certain ways. And so, I just want everyone to watch out for each other and watch out for each other's children. We are a community, and we need to be, if you see something, say something. If you're seeing someone following a child, or speaking to them, offering them candy, anything that you, you know, if you see something that just. candy, anything that you, you know, if you see something that just seems odd to you, stop it before it happens, because the numbers are huge. I actually, last year, I talked about it last year, so you may recall, I worked with a fifth grade class who, a bunch of girls who had picked this as a topic to do a report on, and they did a great job of diving deep and learning about it, and they were seriously so interested and really wanting to change how that all played out, and they came up with some suggestions on how the community could be safer. So I just, and I wish I had thought about it, I would have brought the 800 number for human trafficking, ending human trafficking, but you can Google it and go online and figure out how, if you see something, certainly call 911, but also talk to your children. This is to the public, talk to your children, make sure they're aware. It's not, you know, when I grew up, it was like, just don't talk to strangers, but this is way beyond that, so, and make sure that your kids, if they think something's happening to a friend of theirs, they're getting targeted in some way, that they know to speak up, because the adults in the communities need to support the children. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Vice President, it's Georgia.
In the spirit of celebrating the legacy of Dr. King, I will be spending time tomorrow with middle schoolers. I try to think back about when I was in middle school, and folks would come talk on the holiday, right? And that's what it would oftentimes be, someone coming and talking about the things that we kind of heard about in the class, right? And one thing I learned is that young people want to know, how does this relate to me, and how can I continue the dream, if you will? So tomorrow, from about 8:30 to, I believe, 10:30, I'll be spending time at Truman Middle School for their assembly and answering questions with, and working with young people to talk about how they, at the middle school level, can continue the dream. What does that look like? A lot of times, it's always blown up, like it's gotta be huge. It ain't that deep, right? So I'm gonna be looking forward to spending some time with young people tomorrow and getting my cup filled, talking about the great Dr. King, and sliding into the weekend. So that's it, thank you.
Excellent. All right, well, ledge, the legislative session and all of the fun that comes with that started on Monday, and there was quite a bit of prep, because there are a number of bills that are being addressed and that are tied to our legislative agenda and priorities. And just some information, so this is a short session, so it's a 60-day session, and the legislature has, there's over 200 bills already, and that is up, I can't remember what the percentage was, but it's up 20 to 30 or so percent from last year, and every single year, there seems to be a larger and larger volume of bills introduced. So cutoff for these bills is January 31st, so they are spent, they are wasting no time, and there's multiple committee hearings, and so there's, what I wanted to share last week, and I think Director Baumgart was on this call last week, WAZDA's networking in session hour, they had someone from TBW, the state, new, or TV channel, right? Broadcasting channel, I think, is a better way to put it, and they had someone who is in charge of their education department and all of the educational resources, and they partner with classrooms and teachers and students, and they also have a number of tutorials and information for civic engagement for adults. So those that are interested in civic engagement and just how the legislature works, how a bill is created and passed, and what that, the committee rules processes are, TBW has some pretty remarkable resources that I actually was not quite aware of to that depth, so. And then I was going, so I already talked about Traffic and Safety Committee, and then, oh, Director McElroy joined me today in the in-session for WAZDA today, so, and it was an overview of, really, most of the focus was on capital bonds and capital projects and simple majority bills, and so, which is something that a huge number of districts in the state and even in Pierce County can't pass. So makes us very grateful, and Director Baumgart has always been really good at making sure that we thank the voters, because that would not happen, we wouldn't have the buildings we have and the resources we have without our voters. And then the last thing I wanted to share, in the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting, Kalen Henley from the city of Tacoma, from Safe Rotz to Schools, shared that they are partnering the city, there's a multi-agency partnership to expand the walking school bus pilots, and they are, and I'm sharing some information that Kalen sent to me. She wants to, we wanted to call out and thank her partners or their partners, Jimmy Greer with the Whole Child, Brady Becker with CTE, and Jen HK with Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. And so there's a great collaboration to collaborate with high school students and Jobs 253, so our high school students can earn money participating in the school bus, walking school bus project. And so TPS, Whole Child and Career and Technical Education, the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, and the city of Tacoma are offering a new Jobs 253 internship opportunity. Eligible high school students can become walking school bus route leaders during the spring semester. As a walking school bus leader, students will be youth mentors, walking with students to or from school at select elementary and middle schools. Students receive their first teen mental health first aid certification through this internship, plus credit and a stipend. Go to jobs253.org to check out more about this opportunity. Did I leave anything out on that, Superintendent? Awesome, okay. Yeah?
I forgot two things.
Yeah?
Okay, so two things. I also wanted to say that happy Whole Child Month, and I don't want us to forget and embrace that fully as we're going about our work every day, that with kids in classrooms, the warm welcome and the work with restorative justice that we're doing in every single one of our schools and in our after-school programs at Beyond the Bell and Club B, and then we're working with lots of community partners to spread the philosophy of Whole Child and engage other community players, partners, parents in living the dream, as we say. So that's one thing. And then the second thing is, I would be remiss, we have J Mac tomorrow morning, so, and I'm looking at my colleague over there.
Hey, I'll be at Truman.
Oh, you know, you, you are bad. Anyway, but that's a good, I'm glad you're at Truman, you get a bye. But tomorrow morning, we will actually, the first thing on the agenda is actually, or second thing on the agenda is actually another deep dive into the Maritime Skill Center. So Adam Koulos will be there, working with Matt Marra from the port, and doing a collective description of where we are now and keeping everyone posted, and then we're also going to be thinking about the revised new, we're electing new officers and thinking about the new focused projects within each of the three thematic areas, justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, health and public safety, and community wealth building that we want to focus on this year. So as you can be assured, next meeting, I will give you an update.
Excellent, thank you. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Just to build on Director McElroy's comments, there are, Ms. Jumpener staff, they put up some winter resources on our website for families that may need some things out there. Obviously, the weather in the Pacific Northwest changes very fast, and so just really encouraging folks, we will do our best to give them the latest updates. We're monitoring, we have a team that monitors every day. They work closely with the Pierce County and their management team to determine when it's safe, when it's not. We try to make decisions as fast as we can, so this is the time of year where you're going to want to check in on the local news with us, check in on your websites, but if you need any resources at all, there is a list of resources that are available on the front page of the website, so please encourage your children. I know that I have teenagers, and oftentimes my teenagers still want to wear shorts and a t-shirt, so just even little things like take a hat and a hoodie if you have those, and if you don't have those, please reach out to one of our local resources, and we're gonna try to help and partner with you. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, item number 17, announcements of next regular board meetings. January 18, 2024, 6:00 p.m., there will be a study session. January 25, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. will be the next business meeting, and February 8, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. will be the following business meeting. And with that, item number 18, I adjourn this meeting.